Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order if you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Shaun, will you please call roll?
Detective Mayor Palozza.
Excused.
Councilmember Baggett.
Excused.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'm here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Thank you. All right, we are going to start tonight with a presentation for Green River College. I don't know if most of you have an updated agenda, probably not, we just made a quick addition today, but I am going to go over to the podium, make sure we have any notes. So this evening we have with us council and audience several students from Green River College from the Phi Theta Kappa fraternity, right? Is it fraternity?
Honor Society.
Honor Society, all right. So this came about actually because one of our code enforcement officers, Tammy Capule, was sending me some photos this weekend of the great work that this organization has been doing, going around town once a month, is it once a month, cleaning up graffiti in their city. And so realizing that many of them are graduating and will be gone after just the next couple of weeks, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring them and thanking them for their work. So if I might ask for your indulgence and when I call your name if you would please come up front. And we also have, who I will also ask to come up front, Dr. Suzanne Johnson, who is the President of Green River College. And we have Megan Evans, who is the Phi Theta Kappa Advisor and Development Specialist with the Green River College Foundation. Come on up. And then the students, hopefully, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, I am going to do my best to say them appropriately. Vicki Freeland. Jennifer Guile. Samantha Railsback. Kayla Lawrence, who is Vice President of Service. Daniel Tampa Bolin, who is the President. Justin Hardy, Secretary for Next Year. Eva O'Neil, Vice President of Service for Next Year. Roddy Akbar, President for Next Year. And Sandra Bravo, VP of Fellowship. So I don't know which of you is planning on talking this evening. Who drew the short stick?
Well, Kayla's the one that does, she's been planning all of the...
All right, well, just take a look at this group of young people who give of theirselves, give their time. How many of you actually live in Auburn when you're not attending Green River? Yeah. Not all of them do. This is not necessarily their hometown when they're not attending college. And so for them to love their community so much that they are willing to give of their time on the weekends to clean up the graffiti of those who don't love the city as much as they should, I think is just an amazing action on their part and also for their advisors and for Dr. Johnson, who is the President of the College, to instill those kinds of work ethics and values in our students is something to be applauded. So before we have anyone speak, can we just give them a round of applause? And I will turn it over to you to say a few words.
Okay, well Megan then, okay? I'm not afraid of the mic. So we, every month, we work really closely with code enforcement and the Police Department. And actually, it's Kayla that does all the work and she makes sure that we have all the paint supplies that we need and we go out and we cover up graffiti and it's been really fun for us, for the students, for all of us to do this together. It's a great opportunity to really help out Auburn as well. We love being able to do that. We did fundraise a little bit and we have our own paint supplies that we can use and we also get some paint supplies provided to us from code enforcement, which we thank you so much for that because that really does help. So together, we combine forces and make sure that we can cover up as much as we can.
Dr. Johnson, did you want to say anything?
I'm never shy of a mic.
Never shy.
Well, thank you, Mary Beckus. I just want to take a moment to thank you for acknowledging the work of some of our many wonderful students. Green River College is a resource of the community, it's an extension of a community, and we are here to serve the community. And we do that in many ways. Sometimes it's that we're producing well-educated and well-trained future employees of our communities and in other ways through this charitable activity. PTK is the leading academic honor society of community colleges. You're looking at students who will be transferring on to Tier One institutions all over the country. In fact, Daniel, I know is going to the University of Michigan very soon. We're sorry that he's leaving. And I'm sure I know other students in terms of where they're going and what they'll do. They got their start at Green River and they got their start in Auburn. For some, it's their home, this is an area that they've been born and raised, and for others, it's a place that they've come to visit and call a second home. So thank you for acknowledging Green River and it is our privilege to be able to be part of this community and to provide the services that we do. So thanks.
We have goodie bags, Auburn swag for you. There we go. So students, advisors, presidents, if you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of council for the great work that you are doing in our community. You just go up and shake their hand, come up, oh, this way. And as we thought, our audience will begin to dwindle as things, yes, go on here, but thank you once again. We put this together just today, so the students, to take your time to come down here tonight is very meaningful and just another testament to the great work that you do for your community. Thank you so much. And now, if I could have Chief Pearson come up front, come to the podium. Council and audience, we have started doing more recognition of our officers for great things that they're doing in the community as well. And so I will turn it over to Chief Pearson to share with you the latest of those actions.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, here we are again, recognizing some excellent work within the Auburn Police Department. Sitting up here tonight is Officer Anderson, Sergeant Skeen, Detective Lynn, and Officer Nelson. These officers have a variety of experience, but I could say this, they're the utmost professionals and when I read through some of the excerpts here, I think you will agree. Officer Nelson tonight is going to be receiving a life-saving award. The remaining three officers will be receiving a merit award. The life-saving award is any time an officer performs his or her function out there and during the course of the action goes to the extreme and the extraordinary to save a life. Once that happens, we then confirm that using our Medic One personnel to indicate to us and provide a statement that the officer's actions truly did aid in that. The merit award in the Police Department is an award given to officers who have shown excellence in the area of tactical operations, whether that be from a SWAT operation or for really just using good, sound judgment and tactics while they're in the field as an officer or a detective. And we find those cases to be extraordinary and it's sometimes very scary and have a lot of danger associated with it. So first, I want to start off with a life-saving award tonight. I should mention also that you're going to hear some other names of some other officers. Some officers were unable to attend tonight. They'll be receiving these awards at another location, so just bear with me if you hear a name that you haven't, that's not standing up here. All right. On March 16th, 2019, at about 1:40 a.m., an adult male was riding a 2007 Suzuki VZ-800 southbound on Auburn Way South. The male failed to stop prior to entering the several intersections against several solid red lights. As the male entered the intersection of Highway 18 and Auburn Way South against the solid red, he collided with the vehicle, making a left turn from northbound Auburn Way onto westbound Highway 18. The impact of the collision instantly severed the leg above the knee to the subject. Officer Quake, Nelson, and Slate were quick to arrive on the scene. Officer Nelson immediately placed a tourniquet on Thomas's left leg above the injury in an attempt to control the bleeding. Officer Quake provided a second tourniquet, also above the knee, controlling the bleeding. Officer Slate held Thomas's head still, minimizing the impact of any spinal injuries until medics arrived. Officer Slate also talked to Thomas, ensuring then that he was going to be okay and had nothing to worry about. So great teamwork here. Leslie Poehl with the King County Medic One advised that upon arrival, she found Officer Slate holding the male's head in order to protect cervical spine. She also found that the two tourniquets were placed on the male's leg. Not only had they been placed, but they were placed in the exact and correct location. The patient had an amputated leg below his knee and upon further, a femur fracture. The fracture was difficult to see because the patient still had his pants on and they covered the femur, which was protruding from the leg. Without that knowledge, the officer still applied two tourniquets above the open fracture, therefore above the bleeding. This most definitely helped to save the life of the young man. There was also little bleeding from the amputated leg and open fracture when she arrived. This would not have been the case if the tourniquets had not been placed or if they were placed in the wrong places. This most certainly helped save the man's life. The officer did a fabulous job and should be very proud of themselves. So based on your actions tonight, Officer Nelson, you're awarded the life-saving award from the Auburn Police Department. Congratulations. This award is an award actually somewhat belated, but after reviewing the incident and where another officer was also awarded the Medal of Distinction, we decided to go back and revisit this case and give the attention and the recognition where we believed it was due. So this case actually goes back to April 4th of 2018. The Valley SWAT team responded to an armed barricaded subject in the city of Federway. Upon being involved in a collision, a male subject fled the accident to a residential neighborhood. The male unlawfully entered a vehicle attempting to steal it. The suspect was unable to get the vehicle into gear prior to Federway officers arriving. As officers arrived, the suspect fled from the vehicle and into a nearby house by crawling under an open garage door. The suspect closed the garage, barricaded himself inside, and armed himself with several firearms found inside the residence. During the standoff, the suspect demonstrated the willingness to use lethal force against officers as he fired at them from the attic space and through the roof as they were deploying gas. After approximately 10 hours, the suspect was located with the use of a FLIR, which is a device used to work in the night. And so the FLIR unit, while SWAT officers were clearing the residence covertly with the use of night vision goggles. The suspect was located under a crawl space and when contacted, began firing several rounds from a pistol. Sergeant Skeen was standing in the kitchen nearby where the shots were being fired and felt the percussion of the rounds being fired below. Sergeant Skeen provided cover while the hole was cut into the kitchen floor so that the suspect could be rescued. A Federway officer returned fire, wounding the suspect. Not knowing his condition, Officer McNabb was part of the entry team and entered through the attic contacting the suspect, still armed and in need of medical aid. Officer Anderson had in his position in the dining room adjacent to where the suspect was firing, as he was also trying to locate the suspect using a FLIR. Officer Lynn was entering the residence earlier in the operation to help extinguish a fire. The entry was made while the location of the suspect was unknown and after he had fired several rounds at the officers. Based on all of your actions that day, you distinguish yourselves with excellence during this tactical incident regardless of the risk. Because of your actions, you're hereby awarded the Auburn Police Department's Medal of Merit, recognition for your actions. Your actions exemplify the core values of this police department and serves as a role model for all officers involved. So congratulations. All right, as you can see, that's all great work and I'd like to give all the officers one more round of applause and thank you. Some congratulations from the council.
Thank you, Chief, and we will expect many more opportunities to highlight the great work that our Police Department does. And for the families that are here, I know that it is not an easy life for you as your officers go out protecting the safety and the peace of this community. And we want to thank you for your support and for the sacrifices that you make so your officers can do the work that they are so good at and truly love. So a thank you to you as well. All right, Shaun, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
Only the Green River presentation.
Thank you. All right, public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing for Right-of-Way Vacation V3-18. City Council to hold a public hearing in consideration of Right-of-Way Vacation V3-18. Ingrid, is there any staff report?
No staff report tonight. We did discuss this with the council at the May 13 study session, but we're happy to answer any questions. This particular vacation is actually located along B Street Southeast, south of Second Street Southeast.
Thank you. All right. And council, did you have any questions of Ingrid before I open the public hearing? All right. I will open the public hearing for Right-of-Way Vacation V3-18. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this Right-of-Way Vacation? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Chen with McKenzie. Represent the property owner filing for the vacation and wanted to thank city staff for working with us and we support the decision that's been published.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Right-of-Way Vacation? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please, ma'am, come, yeah, Mary? Yeah. Come forward. Mary and lady, I should say.
The reason that I wanted to speak is that fireworks are going off right now.
Mary, could we get your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Mary Miller. I live at 1802 I Street Northeast in Auburn. The fireworks are going off right now and animals are starting to be spooked. So it's just to remind people to help look out for their neighbors' animals and also make sure your animals are licensed in case they do escape, because they will during this period of time. And just kind of try to be aware and help your neighbors if need be.
Thank you. And lady is looking for a treat, I know, so.
Well-trained service animal.
She also probably knows that I'm a sucker and I'll give her more, but lady, those will have to wait till after. See, she knows. There you go. Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bob Zimmerman. Address is 3302946 Place South, Auburn. I noticed you guys got your crow put up and down on Les Grove Park. That made me wonder if it's seismically safe and if it means wind load. You know, you certainly allow projects in my neighborhood that aren't. If it is safe, why is it safe? You know, I mean, that's good. And if it's not, why did you allow it to not be safe? But if it is, how do you make the determination where you allow unsafe projects and where you require safety? Mr. Tate was quoted in the Auburn Reporter not too long ago saying that this Heritage building demo had to be safe. Yet up where I live, you allow the robber barons to save a few yards of concrete to build unsafe things, a few feet of pipe to locate gas tanks and where they will pool. And when you ignore these kinds of safety laws and regulations that have been developed over the last 100 years, you see what that got Boeing. They used to be the premier aircraft manufacturer in the world. They'll be lucky if they get that 737 back in the air in our lifetime. And this permeates throughout management, most public and private. You know, you look out at like PNG, Pacific Gas and Electric in California, they killed 100 and they killed 85 people, I believe, last year in one fire. The previous year, they had 18 fires that killed 22 more. The Wall Street Journal says they've been lying about their safety standards to regulators now for over a decade. It just goes on and on and on. I think Auburn really needs to take a real hard look at the standards they set for people that make life and death decisions. You seen what we get for the Police Department? We need those same standards for people, all the employees that make life and death decisions. And of course, you know, you take a deal like Boeing, you know, well, they've got risk in the air all the time. How often does it happen? They've got hundreds of millions of miles of passengers on those airplanes before they kill 346 people. Auburn's going to get theirs all in one shot. Is it going to be tomorrow when that Haskadia earthquake hits? Or is it going to be 15 years from now? The website says it only happens every 500 years. The fact of the matter is, it happens on average every 243 years for the last 10,000 and it's never been more than 320 years. So we are in year 319 right now. Next January, you will be record-setting territory on that 320-year maximum. Looks like I ran out of time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward.
My name's Crystal Fisher. I live off 28 V Court Street, Auburn, Washington, 9802. I apologize, I've been up since 4:30, it's my bedtime, so I'm going to try to keep my thoughts straight. I came today because we rent in Auburn. We actually started renting here, decided if we wanted to buy here three years ago in a month. At that time, we bought a basketball hoop for our kids, put it in our street. I think it's been in the same spot, maybe moved a little bit during the windstorm for those three years and currently got a violation from the city on it. On our same street, there's three other basketball hoops that didn't receive that So I have started looking into this because when I was speaking to the gentleman that was helping me, who's very helpful from the city, he could not give me an actual code that we were violating. He had to find out what code it was, which was extremely frustrating. If you're going to come put a notice on my door, we should know the code right then and there. What am I violating? What do I have to fix? It wasn't until I received this beautiful notice on my door with a violation fee that I figured out that code. So I came here to talk because I drove around a half mile within my house and found 35 other basketball hoops in the exact same violation. This is something that every kid in our neighborhood comes and plays on. I have kids on my basketball hoop. I have to kick them off when it's nighttime because they're constantly on this. I move it into my driveway where it's supposed to be, but it's not what this code says. It's inactive for every kid in my neighborhood. My driveway's this. Can't play basketball hoop in that, or you can't play basketball in that, excuse me. So I came to talk about how that violation is affecting the kids in our neighborhood and how it's really funny that my violation is I have to have a permit to have a basketball hoop sitting in front of my driveway. So, and they told me I should come here to talk about it, so that's why I'm here today, and how to get that addressed.
So our Director of Community Development is Jeff Tate and Code Enforcement is under his department. And so Jeff, if you wouldn't mind taking a couple minutes to chat with Ms. Fisher about that, we'll make sure to get it addressed for you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Shaun?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Council Ad-Hoc Committee reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. We currently have one ad hoc committee and that is Finance. And Chair Wells, would you like to give that report? Yes, thank you very much. Myself and Councilmember DeCoursey, this last week, reviewed the vouchers and we found no questions and we are recommending that it be approved. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do I have Councilmember Wells? I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda. Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
The only one that didn't raise their hand and I called on you. All right, thank you. Councilmember Wells? On the Consent Agenda for this evening, we have the minutes of the May 20th, 2019 City Council meeting. We have the minutes of the May 28th, 2019 study session. We have the Claims Vouchers and Payroll Vouchers, which Councilmember DeCoursey and myself reviewed and recommend being approved. We also are setting a date for our TIP report. It's the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. We are recommending approval for a change...
We are recommending approval for a change order on Auburn Way North sidewalk improvement project. And we are also wanting to award a contract to the low bidders for an A Street Southeast preservation project.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All opposed? Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business, so we will move to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 6715, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, granting to Fat Beam LLC, a Washington limited liability company, a franchise for telecommunications and related services.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I move to adopt ordinance number 6715.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown, since I've already called on you once and...
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Pretty plain and simple. It's a franchise agreement for a telecommunications cabling service.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6715, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6717, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, vacating right-of-way of a portion of B Street Southeast, south of Second Street Southeast within the city of Auburn, Washington.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the ordinance number 6717.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, this is the ordinance that we already have studied in study session as well as hearing a public hearing discussion, and I would recommend adoption.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6717, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution 5425, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, declaring a certain parcel of rural property as surplus and authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement conveying the property.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales?
I move for the approval of resolution number 5425.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5425, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5427, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an agreement between the city of Auburn and Racial Equity Consulting Group for racial equity training and policy development.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
This is resolution...
Oh, your microphone, please.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 5425.
5427.
I mean, 27, sorry.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Yes, this will allow the mayor to authorize and execute the administration agreement between the city of Auburn and the Race Equity Consultant Group for race equity training and policy development.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Wales?
I have four or five comments. First is that depending on what happens in the next six months or so, 50% of our council could be brand-new. So investing 40 hours of training in the area of equity might be best, if approved, delayed a year when we have a group of council members that are going to be here for at least two years until the next round of elections. Second, I want to point out that Sephora is doing equity training for all of its employees and it's taking an hour. Starbucks recently did training and took half a day. I really question the use of 40 hours for the council members. Many of us who are in the business world and/or who have some advanced degrees and other types of things where this has been included in our training. Next, I believe after looking at the outline of the program, you're going to hear me once again say that the scope is too narrow, that race is absolutely important, but in this community, you've got to put up with me being the old special education director, that, and old, we've got to do, we've got to take into consideration not only people with disabilities, but the elderly, meeting the needs of the elderly, and historically, a significant portion of our population, which is our veterans. And I think that we need to look at some of the sexual diversity type of issues. Finally, not finally, but next to last is we are engaged in problem-solving as it relates to budget for a number of years out. We're not in crisis mode, but I feel that this is a significant amount of money and that if we're going to do something like this, we need to have all the council members here to make this decision or possibly wait until Shelley's meeting where she gives us the next budget update. But finally, the point I want to make is that we have recently done new hires and I don't believe that racial equity is a new topic that's just appeared in the last, say, year. I think that we have been looking at this and our definition is getting broader and broader, but we are fortunate to have some cutting-edge people. We have a new attorney to our city. We have recently a new attorney graduate, who I'm sure has had training in this topic. And we have a full-time HR person who is new to the city, who I am sure, as an HR person, knows how and knows where the resources are where we can do something with our existing staff to not go so overboard, and I shouldn't say overboard, but to spend $400,000. So I am not going to be voting for this, but I am hoping that we can table this until the full board is here and we have a chance to meet with Shelley.
Councilmember Holman?
This having, subject being on the agenda, I was mailed a link to an editorial that was in the Auburn Examiner. And with your indulgence, I'd like to read a couple paragraphs out of the editorial from the June 1 editorial. The byline is Elizabeth Miller, and it is from her blog, Auburn Examiner. "Racial Equity: Will Auburn City Council Make the Right Choice? Monday's Racial Equity Vote Is About Far More Than Budget Impact." For what feels like months now, our city council members have been discussing and debating resolution number 5425. This resolution would permit the city to bring in a consulting group to provide racial equity training and provide development and policy development. I'll be blunt, I have no idea why this is even being debated. I'm going to skip over several in the interest of time and go to the conclusion. The more things change, the more they seem to stay the same. Despite the years of protests, of laws being changed, rights being won, at least on paper, and statistics showing some positive movement, inequity remains. Inequity in our society thrives. Hate still has a home here, and Auburn is no exception. Deshaun Horn was nearly beaten to death in Lakeland simply for the color of his skin. Racial slurs were spewed at him from his attacker as he filmed Horn's lifeless body. After breaking down her bedroom door and calling her a whore, the attacker showed the video to his sister. Youth and relative immaturity were the reasons the defense requested the judge be lenient. The attacker defended that the slur he spat at Horn as he lay bleeding on the ground is one used frequently in rap and is somehow, and something that he has known since kindergarten. Would you have known about missing and murdered indigenous women had Rosalie Fish not won four races at the Washington Interscholastic Athletic Association State Track and Field Championship while also championing the cause each time her feet hit the track? Fish is a senior at the Muckleshoot Indian Tribal School and ran to honor four women. Fish dedicated each race to one woman, the two-mile to Renee Davis, the 1,600 meter to Alice Looney, 800 to Jacqueline Slayers, and the 400 to Misty Upam. Roads are not more important than people. It has been argued that the cost of the consultant is not worth the return on investment, that roads require more attention. Infrastructure is important to a city, of course it is, but the people using that infrastructure must be put above that. While the budget requires it, there's truly no dollar amount that can be put on the value of ensuring that equity of those, the equity of those who live, work, and visit Auburn. Balancing racial inequity is not about putting one race down. It is about ensuring equity for everyone, no matter what label they choose for themselves or that is put upon them. Hate is a plague to our community. Knowledge, respect, and equity is the vaccine. So we're talking about spending $410,000 over three years to provide training, not just to this council, but to the staff of Auburn, which is how Auburn interacts with its people. And Auburn is becoming a more diverse community every year. $410,000 over three years wouldn't even buy a half a mile of road. To rebuild a road costs in the neighborhood of $1 million per mile. Depends, there's a lot of depending factors on the cost, but just for the sake of this argument, $1 million a mile. So we're talking four tenths of a mile of road over three years. Yeah, the road's important, but as the point in the article that I just read, our people are even more important, the people that drive on those roads. So I'm hoping that we can find the courage to vote for racial equity. My colleagues who are voting against it are not bad people at all, and they see themselves as champions of diversity in many ways. But it's the ways that we don't recognize in ourselves and others that we work with that we must guard against. And this, while not the be-all, end-all, is certainly a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I stand in support of resolution 5427. I think that it's high time we take action on this and approve this initiative. You know, Councilmember Wales is correct. This is not a new topic. And racism, unfortunately, is as old as our nation, and we've been working on this as a nation as long as we have been a country. There are a number of areas where we need to work on implicit bias, such as LGBTQ, ageism, disability, discrimination, religious discrimination. But the foundation for hate in our country and in our community is racism. We must do something about it to build the kind of community for the future that we want. Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
This is a topic that has hit me personally, and when Mr. Reese came and gave his presentation, I came up and I shook his hand and I told him, "Thank you for coming," because it's something that I have felt that the city has needed for quite some time. I also, as Ms. Wells said, I was kind of concerned about the cost, $400,000, especially when we've been constantly being told that we are going to be at a shortfall by the year 2024, and we needed to look where we were going to get some fundings. But the more I read about this, and this has come to us several times already, and we saw a video that really opened up my eyes on bias and discrimination and everything. I was also one of those people that was called a whore, Mexican whore, and this and that. So there are things that have really hit me, even as being on council, when I went out there doorbelling, I had several people telling me to get off their property, they would never vote for a Mexican. Just recently, I also received a phone call saying that they already know I'm a Latina. I've been a Latina for several years. No, I've been a Latina my whole frickin' life. So I felt I got that, that was very... I have to calm down because this is an issue that we definitely need in our city. Even though it is going to cost us some money, there are still people walking around with blinders, and we need to see this and hit it head-on at where the root cost is. Yes, we are going to be a brand-new council, and I am so proud that we are going to have a diverse dias for the first time in 100 and some years. I am so proud to be, I went out and I recruited several of those people, people of color, because we need to represent the people of Auburn, and we're not doing it right now. So I hope that the people, our council, do vote this in because we do need it in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Decorsi, did you have any desire to make any comments on this?
I do, Mayor. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Director Martenson for her presentation last Tuesday because it was a well-presented topic in the way she clarified some of the issues, that she presented some of the answers to some of my concerns, and also clarified some of the points that I had some considerable concerns over. With that being said, first let me say in response to the resolution, yes, I do believe we need to do something. And I believe it's important to take on an agenda similar to this, although I still believe, as well as Councilwoman Wales, that we are not going far enough or deep enough into it, and Councilmember Brown just alluded to the other implicit biases that we need to address, and I would like to see us include that with the utmost importance as well as the racial equity portion as well. Comment related to diversity as such, when I was at the Housing Authority, I did a favor to one of the retiring directors who asked me to take on his role as a senior staff advisor to the Housing Authority's Diversity Awareness Committee. I didn't have any special training or any other information related to that. However, I took on the challenge, I took on the task, and to the day I retired, I remained the director of that diversity group. And it was a widespread... And it was a widespread of culture, creed, of race, and age. It was all in there, and we addressed every single issue. And I believe this resolution needs to do the same in equal format. Now, do I have a concern about the amount of the dollars being expended in this? I do. I think it is important, as Councilmember Wales mentioned that, we do take a look at the dollars. And as the mayor has rightfully mentioned many times, we are not in a financial crisis. We've been made a little bit whole by the recent legislation in the state that's brought back some money back into the city. But as we all know, our expenditures are still growing beyond our revenue sources and will continue. And it is the council's primary responsibility for budget and the appropriations. So it is a very important part of the role of the council members, including the new council members that will be joining us next January. I also believe it's important that this particular type of a resolution should have the input from all seven council members. I'm very glad I was able to participate by phone this evening. We still have two other council members that weren't there this evening. I believe all seven of us need to be together to do this. I believe if I did make a motion now to table it, we probably wouldn't be successful with that. But I would like to see us at least go through Shelley's next iteration of the update of the budget process and the 17th, and then bring this resolution back at the next council meeting after that. I just think it gives us that opportunity to really have an in-depth review and view from all council members at the same time. I do support this type of training. And yes, $400,000, as Councilmember Holman mentioned. It's about $900 per employee, so we're not looking at an extravagant amount. I do have a concern still about the 40 hours for council members being trained. And again, I believe that the syllabus outline should actually be made an exhibit to the resolution itself as exhibit C. But with that said, if I vote on this tonight, I'm not going to support it. I'm not supporting it in the means of not agreeing we should do something. I just don't believe it goes far enough, and I'm still concerned about the dollars, so I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, it's pretty obvious. The votes, and I appreciate everyone's candidness on this. And so I would propose that we, I move that we table this until a... When, Shelley, are you going to be presiding for Vinnie?
On the 17th.
Pardon?
On the 17th of June.
On the 17th of June.
That's two weeks from today.
So we table this for the city council meeting?
Is on the 17th as well.
I meant the city council meeting at the end of June. So it'd be after that?
It wouldn't be until July.
July. The first city council meeting after the June 17th meeting is?
That wouldn't be until July 15th.
Okay. I move that we table Resolution Number 5425 until July 15th.
I believe that's 5427.
5427. Pardon me.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need a second on the table?
Technically, Mayor, council members, it's a motion to postpone until July 15th, not a motion to table, and it does require a second. It's debatable and may be amended.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we need to vote on it?
Yes. Yeah, a motion to postpone is debatable, so council members may speak to it.
All right. Councilmember Wales, did you want to speak?
I want to thank you, John, because I think that we all want to make a commitment to dealing with this topic. As you've said earlier, all of us have been in that field where we've worked with people, and we have a commitment to this city. And I feel like at least providing an opportunity once again, because I know this is kind of drug-out, for all seven of us to be here helps to build a strong team. I think that we've also shared some other types of concerns that may, in the interim, you know, get taken care of or dissolved. So I appreciate the spirit that this is presented in, and thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make one quick comment.
Councilmember Decorsi.
So again, also, thank you, Councilmember Holman, for doing this and for bringing this back into the next timeframe for this as well. I really appreciate that. And I do want to say that I really value the members of our council. And in response, perhaps, to some of the citizenry as we look at what we do, we do the right things, and we will get this done in the timeframe that we decide to get it done in. But we will get something done, and we will be doing the right thing. We just have to go through this in a little more systematic manner to get to that point. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown, did you want to speak? Councilmember Troutman.
I just wanted to say that, Mr. Decorsi, I do understand why you chose to postpone this, but all seven of us have already heard this topic several times. We've reviewed everything that they have given us. And it saddens me that we have to postpone it again. And I do value that all of us council be present, but sometimes things happen for us not to have all of us together. And tonight was one of those nights with having Mr. Pelosi not here and knowing that you're on the phone, but Mr. Bag is on vacation. So it's just things happen, and sometimes we can't have all seven of us together.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All those in favor of postponing Resolution Number 5427 to July 15th, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. The motion passes. I would just like to speak to this for just a moment, if I might. The name of this program is Racial Equity and Implicit Bias. It covers everything that every council member had concerns about tonight. Just because it says racial equity in no way, shape, or form says anything about not focusing on the other isms, such as ageism, or disabilities, or any of the other isms. In fact, Mr. Ruiz provided you with an excellent explanation when that question came up about two or three study sessions ago. I hope at some point, all seven council members will be here again. That hasn't been the case for several meetings now. And if July 15th comes and July 15th doesn't have seven council members, I hope at some point, this council decides that it's time to move forward on this. And am I giving my opinion? Yes, I am. Because I believe that while everyone on this panel on the council has the best of intentions, we all have a need for additional help, assistance with racial equity and implicit bias. Every one of us has biases. Every one of us has room for improvement. And while we may not intentionally do something to harm another fellow human being, we can all be better about intentionally ensuring that we do not. I will move forward with that. Mr. City Attorney, the next resolution, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I just lost it. Give me a second. Resolution 5430 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, supporting submitting a county-wide ballot proposition for funding the Medic One Emergency Medical Services Levy for the period from January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2025 pursuant to RCW 84.52.069 to the voters.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5430.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Troutman.
I second. He was reaching for the mic.
Councilmember Holman.
All seven of us council members can only speak as individuals when talking about supporting a resolution in, or a ballot, on the initiative, initiative ballot. But if, as a council, we vote, which this resolution will allow us to, that as a council we support it, then we can say, "The Auburn City Council supports passing of this ballot." Medic One, an emergency medical service, plays a huge part in not only Auburn but the greater King County area, one of the best emergency medical response programs in the nation. So I would urge my fellow council members to join together and pass this resolution, adopt this resolution, so that we, as a body, can speak to our friends as a unified body in support of the Medic One Emergency Medical Services Levy.
Councilmember Holman, thank you. If I might just correct you on this, this is only supporting the submitting of the ballot proposition to fund. This is to support the King County, well, this is to support it being put on the ballot. If at another time, after it's on the ballot, the council wishes to have a resolution to support that ballot measure, that is also appropriate. But at this time, the council would just be supporting the submittal for the ballot.
My apologies, Mayor. It looks like my wing has affected more than my arm.
Did I get that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. The requirement to have 75% of the cities in the district with a population of greater than 50,000 is a statutory requirement for it to be placed on the ballot.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5430, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. We will move on to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Councilmember Holman.
No report, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brown.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Troutman. Oh, now you're trying to pull a deputy mayor Pelosi.
Oh, my God. First of all, I would like to...
Your microphone, please.
Our young man in the audience, when I said a description about myself, and it wasn't appropriate for me to have said that with you in the audience. Well, anybody. Anyways, I want to start out with my Regional Law and Justice Committee. It was on 5/23/19 last month. They talked about, this is the police department from Lake Forest Park, Chief Stevens Sutton and Bothell Sergeant John Rogers. They had to talk about the radar. And what they talked about was about them partnered, having a partnership with Kenmore, Bothell, and Lake Forest Park Shoreline, and some of the things that they're all doing. They are talking about responding to awareness to de-escalation and referrals, building a plan for people who have been previous contacts with law enforcement. They provide resources for the police. All the police departments all share the same information, providing schools and resource for mental health. They also are being trained on using language to de-escalate situations that will cause some trouble and some of the police officers being injured. The funding comes from, their funding all comes from Risk Management Division. Comes from King County Risk Management. Comes from DOJ. Can't remember what that stands for.
Department of Justice.
Okay. Smart policing, they get $600,000. They get money from Wesbeck. Additional money from King County Council funding, they get $788,000. These programs allows them to make connection with people. They offer business cards and let them know that they can get different type of services. They also talk to people with mental health. They, the police officers also carry some mental health experts in their vehicles to give them more education on how to deal with people when they approach them. They cover all kinds of stuff that they do. So I won't, I'll cut a lot of this, and I'll go to... We also had another lady from Beryn, Councilmember. She talked about their lead program and how they have changed the lead program to fit Beryn. They, she used some examples of a Jane Doe. This is a real-life person who has been booked for 27 times. And the police officers have 32 police that she came across with on all of those times that she was booked. Beryn police did not like looking at the people as a problem. They look at the people as, the police are using navigators to address, to reduce causes of people that are trying to stay alive even though they're in poverty. The police workbook was taken from the Seattle program, and they tailored it just to fit the Auburn. So after my meeting on Friday morning, May 31st, Laura Westingard from the WorkSource, she invited all of us council to go and do mock interviews with the school, with the teacher, Kelly Jensen. But I was the only person, I was the only council member that agreed to go do the mock interviews with two classes, 15 to 20 students. And it was kind of neat to, Laura had them do little application, and they had to do a 60-minute advertisement. And we had to stand there and listen to them, introduce themselves, and why we should hire them. So it was really interesting on some of their passions, some of their education, some of their training, some of their volunteering that they have been doing in Auburn High School and also out here in the community. Then after that, on that same evening, we went to go and view the beautiful bird that's at Lesgro Park. It was packed. I have never seen so many people there, and so many people taking pictures, selfies, and saying how beautiful the bird looked. And I learned some more about crows. I didn't know about crows, that if you, there was a gentleman that found a dead crow in the road, and he went and picked it up and went to put it in the garbage. There was a crow over above and saw him put it in the garbage. That crow remembered who he was, and for five years, he followed this man and bombed his car. The gentleman decided to trick the bird, so he put his car in the garage and put his wives out in the driveway. And that bird never did a thing to her car. As soon as he brought his out, it bombed it again. And it did this for five years. So they do remember you, so don't do any harm to any of those crows. Then on June 2nd, which was Sunday, Deputy Mayor Pelosi and myself and Councilmember Brown, we attended the first day of opening the farmer's market. Again, it started out kind of light. By, I'd say, about 12:30, it was packed. I drove by there, and there were so many people. So I think we did a really good, we made money that day. The mayor opened up with telling everybody, "Thank you for coming," and to make sure that everybody go and say hello to all the vendors and also to... that everybody go and say hello to all the vendors, and also to thank them for being there and to spend money. Well, I didn't leave that place until I left some money behind myself, so I listened to you, Mayor.
Listen to you.
And that's about it. We did, they did have 64 vendors. This is the first time Daryl said that they have had that many vendors, and they're looking to maybe have more throughout the summer. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales.
No report. Thank you.
Okay. A few items.
Mayor, can I make one comment for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a report, but I just want to thank everybody for accommodating me tonight, and thank you to Sean Campbell, our city clerk, for making this happen, and hopefully back on my feet. I see Councilmember Holman's got a broken wing. Hopefully back on my feet here in the next few days, and back at it again, but I greatly appreciate it. And just to let everybody know that when you're talking on the phone and watching the video, the video is seven seconds behind the conversation on the phone. Thank you.
And there is an intention for that delay. All right. Few items. On Tuesday, May 21st, I had the great honor of speaking at the UW Evans School on homelessness and social justice. It was a class, many of them are majoring in criminal justice or social justice, and it was a great opportunity to share what we are doing in South King County, specifically in Auburn, how we have ensured that our voices are heard within the region, and to discuss how we can better serve everyone within our community. I just had a great time. I will tell you, I was a little bit nervous before I went, going to be in front of a class of at least 25 students, but they put me at ease. They asked great questions. They challenged me, and just really appreciated the time. Adrian Quinn is the adjunct professor up there right now. She used to work for King County in King County Public Health, and just really appreciated the opportunity to, to speak to the class. The next day, the 22nd, we had a ribbon cutting for four new electric vehicles that the city has purchased. Those were replacements for vehicles that had outlasted their useful life, and so with these new vehicles, it is going to be four cents per mile to operate them as opposed to a gas-powered vehicle with a minimum of 15 cents per mile. So we are really excited about the four new vehicles out there. I can attest to the fact that they have some power, because I chirped the tires as I took off on, in one of them after the ribbon cutting, so they do have quite a bit of power behind them, and I understand they can go about 240 miles on a single charge. So council, you have the opportunity to drive them as one of the council vehicles, so hopefully you all get the training on that and take, take that opportunity. On Friday, the 24th, I attended the memorial service for Marie Peterson, 97-year-old woman who has just been a pillar in this community. She lived her last few years over at Merrill Gardens, and she had a wonderful life. She had such a positive impact on so many, and while it's sad to know that I won't get to see her, she's been a friend for decades, and I won't get to see her when I go over to Merrill Gardens each month, I do feel blessed that I had the opportunity to have those years with her and learn from her sage wisdom. Right after that, attended the swearing-in of two new police officers, Berger and Bryant, who did an excellent job at the academy. And then that night, along with Councilmember Trout Manuel, we were at a celebration for the Marshalese 40th Constitution Day. It was a large celebration down at Mount Baker Middle School. We had had the chance to meet with some of the dignitaries from the Marshall Islands earlier in the day that had flown in for this celebration, and it was well over three hours of ceremony and performances by the time the evening got to the point of food. And the food, there was a great deal of, of food there, but it was just a wonderful celebration of the diversity within our community that we need to celebrate and ensure has, always has a place in our city. On the, on Monday, the 27th, our Memorial Day remembrances, we had one at Mountain View Cemetery that was extremely well-attended. Deputy Mayor Pelosi and I were there, and then immediately after that, went down to Veterans Memorial Park for our second memorial remembrance, and both well-attended. We want to thank the VFW and also the American Legion for their part in both of those services. Councilmember Trout Manuel's already talked about the Crow with Fries landing. There were well over 400 people in attendance. There were hot dogs, chips, no fries, and water for any who wanted it. The fabulous Murf tones turned into the fabulous Crow tones that night, and, oh, yes, I have one of those, yes. They did have fries to hand out. But it was a great night for everyone who was there to celebrate the landing of the newest art piece in our city. I just want to give you a little bit of background on that art piece. There are, there have been some who have asked why the city would spend so much money on an art piece. First, art is a significant part of who we are, the fabric of our lives here in Auburn. The council allocates roughly $30,000 annually for art within this city. The Arts Commission decided a few years ago to not spend that allocation each year, but to save it up for a larger, more iconic piece, and that's how the Crow came to be, is that there was a panel of arts commissioners and Parks Board members that came together to identify the artist, and then the piece that would be placed at, in Lesgo to be that iconic art piece, and the city council approved that contract with the artist once that determination had been made. And so, again, as people ask how that money could be spent for a large piece, it is because it was saved up over several years to do so. Saturday, I attended another Eagle Scout ceremony for Troop 401, this time for Trenton Chafe. I believe Troop 401 is approaching the 100th Eagle Scout.
June 15th will have a 100th.
So Trenton was number 99, but as the troop reminds me, they don't focus on who is the 100th, but the fact that there are so many Eagle Scouts within that troop. So I commend them for that, and as Councilmember Trout Manuel also mentioned, the Auburn International Farmer's Market opening day, it was the 11th year, 68 vendors actually this year, so it's the most we've ever had, and we will continue to look for more vendors. And yes, if you attend, spend your money, bring your money, spend your money, because those vendors, that is their livelihood, whether it's, whether it's produce, or food products, or crafts that they have made, they are there with pride, and please consider coming. We are open at the farmer's market at Lesgo Park, right by the iconic Crow with Fries, every Sunday between now and October 5th, I believe, somewhere around that date. And with that, Mr. City Attorney, do we have need for an executive or closed session tonight?
Yes, Mayor. We need, like, an executive session to focus on, discuss potential litigation under RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1, sub-subsection 2, approximately 20 minutes, so give us a couple minutes to get in there, and we can reconvene back out here at 8:40. No action is, final action after the executive session is proposed.
Excellent. Thank you. So we will adjourn to closed session.